Yeah, it did take a minute to finish the tabs.
I thought, should I send him an email?
Then I go on and she did, and I'm okay. Now I'm good.
Well, I told her.
Uh, don't you use your for the uh...
Bonds for the end.
Yeah.
COP certificate of participation. You see mine, I didn't copy it. And all that stuff with wastewater. Five hundred pages, what? Did you read any of that? That probably meant something to you.
I read some, I didn't read it all.
It didn't mean anything to me.
Would you be able to airdrop me this? Have you airdropped it before? I'm trying to pull it up on my phone so I can airdrop, but if you just go to your screen that looks like this and hit airdrop everyone.
It's uh... Here.
If you click on it, it'll let you hit everyone. And then if you go like you're gonna ascend to the agenda. I wonder if this just pops up on my phone. Oh, the fox with the arrow on the left. Okay, yeah. Okay, I'll see if I can get it on my phone.
I can send it to you.
Now it's showing. It's airdropped? Yeah, you have airdropped on there, because it just gave me the option.
Let me... Let me see if I can do it from uh, from Internet Explorer.
This is just so bizarre, I airdrop stuff to myself all the time, but I'm making this option.
Getting close.
Well, nothing else, I have it on my phone.
So what does that do? Is that, is airdrop Bluetooth or is it...
Yeah, it essentially texts without... I send it to my husband on airplanes all the time. Uh, that's pretty bad. Probably. There it is. Mine should be discovering.
Yeah, I got the scene manager. He's going so fast, yeah.
Alright, we got seven o'clock here, so let's close the door. Roll call?
Lund.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here. Alright. Let's see here. Oh, city council minutes approval?
Move to approve. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Obstate.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. Alright, adoption of the agenda. Move to approve.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Alright, public hearings. We've got a public hearing to establish a general business district. Public hearing on ordinance establishing the GB general business district for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located on the east side of HH Highway, north of Highway 50 and south of Vexens Road.
At your meeting, uh, two weeks ago, you held a, a public hearing to annex this property. It's a small triangular tract of land on the east side of the former HH, uh, right of way. Owned by Baldrich. Uh, this was a piece that we went around with the last series of annexations and the application would now come forward for that. So, uh, they have requested that it be zoned general business, which is what the land adjacent to it in, in each direction was owned in August. And if the annexation is approved later on this evening, staff would recommend approval of this ordinance as well.
Do we have anybody sign up for that one? No? Alright. We heard this last month, so can they got any questions that came up for, since last month? Alright, no one signed up, so we'll move to close that hearing. Alright, next one is a public hearing on an ordinance establishing an R1 single-family residence district for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, known as the right of way for Vexens Road between Enterprise Avenue and the Cahill subdivision.
Again, there was an annexation hearing two weeks ago on this. We've had no, uh, comment received in that time, and that's on your agenda for further action this evening. If approved, they've requested that it be zoned for a single-family residence district. That is what the south part of the right of way, as well as the land south of the road. Zone is for single-family. Staff would recommend approval. If the annexation is approved.
Anybody sign up for that one? No? Alright. Anybody got any questions since last month? Alright, we'll close that hearing. And that closes all the public hearings. First reading only ordinances. An ordinance establishing a general business, general business district for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located on the east side of HH Highway, north of Highway 50 and south of Vexens Road. Anything you want to add?
No.
Okay.
I don't know anything on that, right?
Alright. First reading on an ordinance establishing an R1 single-family residence district for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, known as the right of way for Vexens Road between Enterprise Avenue and the Cahill subdivision.
Nothing additional.
Any questions? Second reading ordinances. An ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located on the east side of HH Highway, north of Highway 50 and south of Vexens Road.
Step correction, approval, we received no additional comment in the last two weeks.
Move to approve?
This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Alright, second reading on ordinance annexing certain adjacent territories into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, known as the right of way for Vexens Road between Enterprise Avenue and the Cahill subdivision.
We've received no additional comment in the last two weeks. Staff would recommend approval.
Move to approve?
This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Alright, first and second reading ordinances. An ordinance amending ordinance 5271 concerning the adopted fiscal year 17 annual budget and ordinance 5365 concerning the adopted fiscal year 18 annual budget for the community investment program.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, what do you have in your packet is the last, uh, of the amendments and adjustments for FY17, and there's a few for 18, uh, concerning the CIP fund. Uh, because we did not receive a grant for the air packs, we need to take those, we need to take the, the grant money, which is revenue and the expense out. Uh, we also had a few POs, uh, from Montraire Park prepared that I didn't account for. And then we have the surety bonds for the new fire trucks that were, uh, placed in fiscal year 17, because there was a, uh, about a 2% savings that we had if we would have purchased them before October 1, rather than after. So it was 5% if we purchased a surety bond, uh, in September, and it would have been 3 in October, so. It was about, it was around a hundred, hundred thousand dollar difference, a hundred and fifty.
Any other questions? Any motion to approve? Move to pass that ordinance to second reading by title?
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance amending ordinance 5271 concerning the adopted fiscal year 17 annual budget and ordinance 5365 concerning the adopted fiscal year 18 annual budget for the community investment program. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
An ordinance approving the fire chief and city manager to purchase two fire apparatuses from the Pierce Corporation.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is, uh, the purchase of the two vehicles from the April bond election, as Mr. Lewin said. Um, by purchasing these both now at, um, we received, uh, an additional seventy-one thousand dollar discount for the payment upfront. Seventy-one thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars, but, uh, both vehicles will be done by next April, or maybe August. We bid them through a national bidding, uh, Houston Galveston. It's a very good negotiated price, makes it easier and saves a lot more money on it. We'll probably end up saving from going out to traditional buying about another two hundred and forty-five thousand less by buying to them. So, um, it's for both vehicles at one million, six hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred ninety-three and twenty-four cents.
Questions on those?
Moves that ordinance be passed to second reading by title?
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving the fire chief and city manager to purchase two fire apparatus from the Pierce Corporation. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Alright, an ordinance amending chapter 24 pertaining to the Warrensburg wastewater pretreatment program.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff have been working on the fast funds for Missouri Department of Natural Resources, uh, to update our, uh, ordinances for the pretreatment program. There's been a, a change in some of the language that, uh, MDR is along with some of the practices. Uh, so in order to remain current, we need to, uh, make these changes to our utility code, uh, which is, uh, chapter 24 of our ordinances. With that, there's, uh, Smith and Council, there was a receipt, or a packet that had, uh, red line changes in it, and, uh, those were changes that, uh, were made in this, in the documents. The staff is asking for approval.
This aligns us with DNRs?
It is in alignment with MDR and what they, they want in their ordinance. It's been many years since we had, uh, upgraded this, uh, we, they basically, we were out of it, uh, to look what our ordinance has, uh, stated, and, uh, they requested we make changes, uh, for that along with the mistake regulation.
Moves that said bill be passed to second reading by title?
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance re-adopting and amending chapter 24 utilities of the code of ordinances of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Other business. Resolution accepting chapter 24 manual for wastewater pretreatment.
Having made sense of the changes in the manual, uh, we're starting now to adopt a resolution, uh, so we got all the, uh, attached information that we have on this, this only adopted.
Did everybody get through it okay?
You bet.
Give me questions.
I figured Lund wanted to slide something through, I didn't want to slide it through, so.
There's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Yes, there is. Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so we just need to move to approve that.
Move to approve. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Refunding of the 2009 and 2010 COP bonds.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, uh, what do you have before you is a resolution for staff to proceed, uh, with the refinancing of the 2009 and 2010 COP bonds. Uh, we've been looking at ways to save money, and I think this is a good opportunity to save hopefully close to, uh, eight hundred thousand. In the general fund, it'll be around a hundred and twenty-eight, about four hundred thousand in parks and two sixty in the CIP. We have Jack Dillingham here today, if you have any questions for him.
So this is where he's gonna, where he's gonna pay these off, or what is?
We're gonna, we're gonna refinance them. Currently, uh, the interest rate, interest rate is pretty high. We're looking to get down hopefully in the threes. So this was, this will save us around eight hundred thousand in interest.
You know what the current interest rate is?
I wanna say it's five, two? Current interest.
Current interest rate?
Yeah, there are various interest rates. We'll be glad, uh, Matthew has a handout there, so.
Yeah.
What does the, uh, city's rating?
The city's rating? It is double A on the COPs.
Eight plus.
Eight plus?
Double A on it. Double A on the COPs.
I'm Jack Dillingham with Piper Jaffrey, this is my associate Todd Gobby, and we're here tonight to answer any questions and have prepared what Matthew just contributed to you, which is a summary of the refinancing as well as a timetable. And, uh, cause my time in the business is coming closer to an end, Todd here with Piper, uh, is, is certainly very much involved as well. We've only worked together twenty-six years, so, uh, I suppose he's capable of handling this part of the meeting, but, uh, at any rate, uh, the idea was that, uh, we present together tonight and, uh, with respect to the pages that you have in front of you. Todd will go through those and will answer any questions you have. This resolution was, of course, prepared by Gilmore and Bell and Sid Douglas, uh, with, in conjunction. Uh, with the action you'll take tonight will authorize Piper and, and Gilmore and Bell to move forward. Uh, the idea is to date the bonds in January to allow them to be bank qualified. Uh, there's a limit each year of ten million, and with the issue we did earlier this year of five million, five fifty, we couldn't do them both in the same calendar year and receive the, uh, the best interest rates, if you will, from the standpoint of that designation of bank qualified. And, uh, this would set us up such that, uh, we would be back again, as you can see in the calendar, uh, again in November with updated estimates on savings and the plan then to, uh, to sell the refunding issue into the market, uh, the first week or so in December.
I think on the summary page, uh, some of the questions that were asked, uh, that information is on there. So most of the certificates range from four percent out to about four point eight percent. I think if you took an average of the outstanding rates for both series of certificates, it's probably in the range of four and a half percent. And so as Matthew indicated, we believe based on the current market environment that we can lower that rate down closer to three percent. And so by doing that, uh, is how you're able to lock in the savings. Keeping the final maturity the same, we're not extending the maturity. So if you don't do anything, uh, the final payment would be in 2033. Uh, that will continue to be the case, uh, if we move forward with the refinancing.
Nice chunk of change to say.
I think one other thing I might, uh, add, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars of savings roughly doesn't all happen at once. That happens over time. Uh, the way it's structured, it generates, uh, an equal amount of savings, uh, about each year out through 2033, and so we, we take that stream of savings and then present value that back to today's dollars, and so that number is, um, about six hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then we divide that by the amount of certificates being refunded to come up with a percentage. Uh, GFOA and some of the, the industry, uh, organizations out there like to see a present value benefit of about three percent or more. Uh, in this case, that's six hundred and forty thousand dollars is eight percent, so, uh, at least double, more than double what, what GFOA would, would recommend as a minimum threshold.
So Matthew, some of the savings in the 2018 budget to come in will be accounted for, if you're saying that?
Yes, we, uh, will see, uh, I wanna say it's around thirteen thousand dollars in savings, uh, and a part will see around ten. If this is done, and we give this interest rate as projected.
Maybe for the benefit of, uh, some of the folks that are visiting with us tonight, uh, you might explain how important it is for the city to maintain that bond rating.
Well, certainly from a standpoint of always being able to go to the market and borrow at the lowest and best interest rates, uh, the, the higher on the rating scale from triple A, being the highest, which, uh, very few issuers are, state of Missouri is, they're very proud of that, and the politicians all want to take credit for that every time there's an election. But, uh, to put that in perspective, triple A, and then one notch below that is into the double A category, and as mentioned earlier, when you ask about ratings in general, Matthew pointed out that the city's GO bond rating, from which where we have voted bonds, such as the April election, we are in the double A category. We're, we're the lowest of the three, if you will, but we're in the double A category, which is a big deal. The A category is very much what the market considers on, in general, an investment grade or better, where many institutions such as banks and so forth may have a threshold of only purchasing bonds that are rated A or better. So that's one of the big reasons, if you will, with regards to maintaining, uh, rating in the A category or better, because obviously the more potential buyers you have, the lower the interest rate you're going to achieve, of course. And so this is at the top of the A category, all the way A plus, A, A minus, or the two lower in A category, and then it goes all the way down to the triple B on down to non-investment grade and, uh, lower ratings, but certainly municipal credits in general, local governments in Missouri, the goal every time is to hopefully be at least in the A category, something above triple B plus, the highest of that category. So certainly this is significant and, uh, allows for the ability to sell at prevailing interest rates as low as, as low as the market will bear. This will be a competitive sale again, so we'll take bids, and so we'll try to establish that way, obviously, that we've got the lowest interest cost possible for the city through that competitive process.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor?
Any else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moves that said bill be passed to second reading by title?
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Alright, mayoral appointees, our appointments, okay. I know we all got a big email of a bunch of appointments, um, pretty much, I've talked to Marcy a little bit, and with the way that the, um, this board is set up, was, was set up, we need to spread these people out just a little bit, because otherwise we're turning over too many people at one time. So what I wanna do tonight is, we got one vacancy in there, and I wanna appoint, um, I think it's Tom Cor, um, Corningfield? Corningfield? I don't know if that's actually pronounced.
He's with, um, the new hotel.
Right, he's over at the Fairfield Inn, so that will, that gives a representation from the Comfort Inn and also representation from the Fairfield Inn, so I think that's a good representation for the, um, for that board to have, because I mean, it gives them a good visibility of what's going on there.
Do you see any motion?
Just move the motion.
Move to approve. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Parents of the council, nothing? Alright. Um, city manager report?
Harold said everything that he had as of this morning was included in the package.
Okay. I got, I remember an email saying that somebody was taking over, but I didn't ever see an email saying who it was.
Oh yeah, I saw it.
Was there any emails that said who it was? Okay, that must have, that must have been the twelve thousand emails I haven't opened yet.
Yeah.
Alright, director of finance report?
I have a, a few things, a few things of note. Uh, we met with, uh, our insurance carrier, and he let us know that we had a loss ratio for the last five years of about fifteen percent, and, uh, the average from Missouri, the lo, average loss, loss ratio from Missouri, uh, municipality is about fifty-seven point two, so.
Holy cow, right.
Yeah, so we, uh, we have a, a very great loss ratio, so I'm expecting, I, I like a, a lower rate, but at least the same that we've been receiving. And then, a little bad news, uh, October sales taxes were down again, and the use taxes were really down. The use taxes is basically contributed to, uh, construction. We don't have, we don't have anything being constructed right now. They were, they were up really high last year because we had a lot of construction, and now, uh, with the law, uh, you see that going down a lot, so. And then I saw, I have, uh, a quarterly report, we didn't have all the information until Friday for these, so this will be the hearing. It'll change a little bit once we get the audit back, but this is the market, where we are right now.
Thank you.
You have a feel for the, uh, audit outcome?
What'd you say?
You have a feel for the audit?
Uh, I don't. I don't think we'll have any issues. We have a few new things for the audit, the GO bonds. It's not as different in the public sector than it was in private, but I don't think there'll be any, any issues.
It was totally, that was a pretty significant increase there in the audit tax.
Uh, yes, yeah, it was a, a pretty large increase. So, uh, let me get you the exact numbers. So about, in the, in the past two months, around the, uh, eight, eight thousand dollar increase from July through September, this year to last year, last year to this year. Yeah, it's a big difference. And then again, this month, we're up around, uh, averaging, we're up, uh, averaged about three thousand dollars for this month.
Does that equate to the new hotel, or does that equate to the big cabin in Warrensburg?
I would, I would say so. Uh, there was some concern that the new hotel might take some business from the other hotels in town, but it doesn't, it looks like it adds to, it's gonna take a while, and it's good.
Anything else? Got any answer, Matthew?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Danny Barber?
Anytime a sewer man is extended within the city that by the way that we're going to say, you're required to get a Missouri Department of Natural Resources permit. They review the plans, they'll strengthen it, but can begin on that sewer man's decision until it's so tight. You can see, we're happy to say we can see that project is operating, comments want to make. So that's positive, no, we're not taking that project back. On the other side of the coin, we, we have recently had about three other smaller school bridge areas failed that we found there in town to take call from citizens. Staff will be in those and looking for the best way of making those repairs. This year we've had an extensive amount of rains we had, not done with a three-quarter inch type rain, then two, three, four, five inch rains. Really been labored in some of these places are showing up that we knew that were important. So kind of along what we've talked about earlier, this does, does impact what we're trying to do, what we're trying to do.
These have been previously identified as a part of the stormwater survey? These have been previously identified as a part of the stormwater survey?
Some of them had, some had.
Okay.
Typically, in their review, their liking to structure, they're looking up the pipe over threats, and they're not getting midway in the pipe where you could, where you could have a failure. And they're not able to see here. Those we generally determine by using our sewer camera. We drive it up the pipe, and we can observe what's taking place with the, with the fire and see what condition. It's all.
Anything, Gary? Greg?
Just a little bit of a reminder, I put out a note to everyone about the game on November 4 with UCM, it is Warrensburg Chamber, Warrensburg City, Johnson County Day at the Game. So if any of you want tickets for you and your family, you'll let me know. Those are, are free, and you'll get those to me by November 1, and include you in Russell City turn day.
Danny Dooty?
Yeah, we opened the bid for the inclusive playground last week. We'll be bringing it up to the city council on November 13. We had a bid from Johnson County Board of Services help us narrow it down to those bids that we received, we received five different bids. And so we'll be bringing that to, like I said, on November 13. They have a meeting Wednesday night. We're gonna travel around to the different parks and have the board members really ask questions about what's going on.
That bid for, was for equipment?
For the inclusive playground.
Okay, but it was for equipment or equipment and installation?
Equipment and installation.
Both, okay, good.
The weather's gonna freeze Friday night.
No, weather said, the weather said 36.
Out change in 20 days.
Yeah.
Have a few things on behalf of Chief Lockhart. We had a successful UCM homecoming. We didn't have any major incidents. We had 10 calls for service, one arrest made during the parade. Out of the 10 calls for service, three of them were parking complaints. The one arrest that was made, the subject was arrested for drinking and public minor possession, and he was given many warnings. So zero turn, or zero motorcycle test that we were evaluating ended last Tuesday, and it was a pretty big hit around town. It was useful during the parade. We're gonna be looking at grant funding to purchase one, and look at adding one to the budget for the next year. And then the, considering the community response to the shooting off Market Street, we had a lot of people calling in reference to the schools being on lockdown. We, the community members and department heads met in reference to this incident and discussed, discussed opening our lines of communication and being proactive and productive for later on. And then we would like to publicly thank Gloria Brandon for getting that meeting pulled together in reference to that incident. So, do you have any questions?
I think it's important to acknowledge all of the department heads for the loss prevention rating that, that the city's able to maintain. That's, that's where it falls, and if you weren't paying attention, we wouldn't be there. Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions?
I, I had a front row seat to that arresting, so.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I was sitting right next to the cop, but he just, he like, I was like, oh! But yeah. Yeah.
I don't think he had much of a choice.
No, he did, yeah, it was, it was, it was pretty clean, so. I don't have anything at all, so. Since Harold's not here, I'm assuming there's no clothes to help see it on the agenda, so. Let's be sure of June.
All right.
Thought that might be a bad time to make a joke. They're totally confused.
I know.
I can't imagine me sitting there going, what are they doing? Cause they don't know where to go.